So, a little bit about myself, I think you really have to start at the beginning. So, I am the product of a teenage pregnancy. My mom was, my biological mother was 13 when she had me and she had my brother 11 short months later. And so, we were placed in foster care shortly after the birth of my biological half-brother. And we lived in foster care until I was about five and a half. And so, I was adopted. I was fortunate enough to be adopted. I was adopted with my brother and grew up in the South Atlanta area in a place called College Park until I was 14. And my parents decided to move closer home. They're both originally from Iowa, or they grew up and lived most of their lives in Iowa. I think my mom's technically from South Dakota. But, wanted to move closer to home. My dad worked for the news bureau at Georgia Tech and took a summer job here at the University of Illinois and so, we moved here. My parents have all, and so that was the summer before my freshman year of high school, we moved to Urbana and I went to Urbana High School, graduated from there. My parents growing up were always, you know, I was raised in a church, but my parents, where we lived, my dad in particular, and if you know my dad at all, my dad's a very quiet, very reserved, doesn't like to get into conversations with people. However, if he knows you, he's wonderful to get in conversation with. But, my dad kind of took this big step forward and was president of our PTA for a number of years, very active in doing trails and projects with that. And then my mom, who's very outgoing, my mom's Darlene Kleppel, worked at the Regional Planning Commission Office in the, I don't know her exact title, but basically the community outreach coordinator before she retired a year ago, has always been active and involved with things and involved with service projects. We would always have international students over for Thanksgiving, that, like, that's my Thanksgiving tradition is having people over that I've never met and will never see again, but that was, that was what we did. We, my, my mom would, my mom would never meet a stranger and so, I learned from that and we would, we would visit things. I grew up visiting historical sites and museums and fossil hunting and so, doing all of that. Moved here to Illinois and four years of high school. Interestingly enough, because my, my skills that I have in the trade and use now, I learned from my parents. My parents are not only some of the smartest people I know, but also some of the creative and most handy people I know. My dad, for a number of years, was the lead mechanic at Kitt Peak National Observatory in Tucson, Arizona, or outside of Tucson, Arizona. And, but they built their basement, dug, dug literally by hand their basement in Georgia, did the renovation remodel on our house here in Urbana. But, college was always what I was supposed to do and what I needed to do. And so, off I went to Eastern. I was going to be a teacher, actually interestingly enough, I was, really wanted to be a physical education teacher, can't tell it, but I used to be a bit of an athlete. But, school wasn't for me. I actually, I hate writing papers. It is, it is, I, I have never, never been a good speller. I've never, I speak well, I love to read, but writing papers for me is one of the most pointless endeavors one can undertake. And, so I passed bowling and speech my freshman year of college. Got my game up, the 200s every once in a while, I'd poke in there, but, but yeah, ended up being invited not to come back for a year to Eastern. And so, I, I took a job lifeguarding at, at the Champaign Park District and met my, who would then become my wife about three years later, but met my wife. And I hurt my foot the summer, that, that end of that summer, I was, we were playing tag or hide and go seek at the pool, doing what 18 and 19-year-olds do, and I hopped a fence and I shoved the bottom of the fence up through my, my sandal into the bottom of my foot and I didn't have health insurance, so I super glued it together. And as I was starting to look for a job for the fall, because I wasn't going to be going back to, to school, I found a job in the housekeeping transportation department at Provena, what was Provena at the time. And worked as a greeter transporter, took patients to their, to their various appointments within the hospital and decided after a little while, I enjoyed it, but I, you know, I can, I am capable of more. And so, I took my EMT license at Parkland over semester and actually never, never practiced as an EMT, but that led to a job as a phlebotomist in the lab. And I worked nights at the lab. Tiffany and I, my wife's relationship blossomed, we got married. When we got married, she was wrapping up nursing school and she got a job at Carl, so I hopped ship over to Carl. And there I was, being a phlebotomist, making $10.25 an hour. Not a bad means or anything, but certainly thought I was capable of more. And so, having been in the hospital, having a wife who was a nurse, I said, "I'll, I'll do the nursing program at Parkland." And it was really interesting. So, there I, there I signed up for classes and I literally found myself sitting in the parking lot. I'd go to school, I'd go to Parkland, I'd drive out to Parkland. I'd sit in the parking lot for two hours during the course of what my, we had moved out of our apartment and moved in with my in-laws. And I was literally going to school, but not going to any of my classes and just sitting there. And at the end of the semester, my report card came home and it was very much like you had as a kid trying to hide the report card and it finally, finally, "Where's your report card?" And so, we had this, not a knockout, but this very emotional, very heated, lively conversation, "What do you want to do?" And I think somewhere in there, I said, "I want to work with my hands, I want to, you know, I, I want to do that." And so, it was, I literally went to Parkland. They had, at the time, a wall full of all these brochures of all these different programs at Parkland, I've heard. And I was digging through them and they'd say, "What, what you can make coming out of, out of the programs there?" And I, I stumbled across the HVAC certificate. It was a one-year program. I think English was going to be the only class that I needed to take that wasn't in line with something else. And so, and it was like $60,000, I could, I could make $60,000 or something. Maybe it wasn't even that high, but a wage, and I was like, "I could do this." And so, signed up for those classes and started taking them and just absolutely fell in love with it. Was taking, had a residential wiring course in there that was one of the top students, was like, "I'm going to be an electrician, this is what I want to be." And so, I told the story, graduation actually, neighbor across the street from my in-laws came across the street and said, "Hey, they're testing, the plumbers and pipe fitters are testing for their apprenticeship program. I know you're taking some classes there, that might be something you want to look into." And so, I did, I applied for that. I thought I'd take that and get some experience, test-taking experience. And so, when I went to become an electrician, I'd be ready to take that test. And I got a call back, did really well on the test, took an interview and got hired on, first, first time, first try as a plumbing apprentice. And so, that kind of leapfrogged me into that. And so, I think there's, I'll try to wrap it, tie it all together. So, so then through, through that, and so, kind of, so here I was. I served as a deacon in church. I, I was a, I think I made it through Weebloes, you know, I had some of those service opportunities. My mom was always taking us. I did several mission trips in high school and that type of thing. So, I always had this service background. I always had, you know, my mom, what my parents would do and their giving and everything. And so, as an apprentice, really bonded with my apprenticeship class, there were nine of us. And we started volunteering at food drives, our local is, we'd give, we'd partner with the electricians and we'd buy a food truck. And nobody would come and help distribute the food and so, they were, so we went and started volunteering at those. We rang bells for Salvation Army. Right around the time, shortly after I got into the trades, the recession hit. And so, we had several members laid off. Myself along with my classmates organized a couple food drives and money collections to do something for our out-of-work brothers and sisters. And ended up winning a service award from the AFL-CIO. And just really kind of grew on that. And then, as we got into, as I campaigned heavily for the 1% sales tax, when that, when that was going around, the second time around, and we got that passed through. And then, started getting a little bit more involved on the political side of things with doing some phone banking particularly, and what really led up to it then was phone, doing a lot of phone banking for Pat Quinn basically. And it was, it was really hard calling people, you, and you probably have the similar feelings. You know, Pat Quinn wasn't great for labor necessarily, but we thought it was a, a better alternative to what was, was there at, on the table, looking at us. And so, but, sitting there is, sat at Distill, November 7th, 2014, and we're sitting there kind of watching elections, you know, definitely leaned probably more Democrat than anything, but it was sitting there and we were losing these races that we had been involved in and everything. And I kind of said something along the lines of, "Why don't we do this for, you know, we've spent all this time and energy, phone banking for someone we've never even met, you know, that we have these qualms about? And, you know, they say that the things are at the, at the local level." My brother's calling me, interesting, we never talk. But, I was talking about him, maybe his ears were itching. But, basically said, "Hey, we should do this for one of our own, one of us should run." And so, I was sitting with Matt Kelly, who's now our business manager for our local, was a, in apprenticeship class with me, David Beck, who's a staffer for Ask Me, but now the vice president of the AFL-CIO, and John Nadler, who's a rep for IFT. And I said, "I'm going to run for school board." And so, yeah, I kind of knew what school board was and was about. The referendum had just been defeated for the first time.
With, excuse me, with children in the school or not?
Yes, yes, I do have children, that, somewhere along the way, I managed to have some kids. Through all this excitement. Yes, I actually, I have a fourth grader now. Madison is in fourth grade at Cary Busey and Molly is in second grade at Cary Busey. And believe it or not, I have a four-month-old at home too, so. But, said, "Hey, let's run for school board." And so, kind of took off from there. And obviously, I had at some point, but wanted to be an educator. But, I think to kind of wrap up the story of why, I had no interest in the referendum. I could have, not cared less. I mean, I would, I had voted yes for it, I was hopeful that it would pass. I lived in the community, obviously, had kids coming up, but was really interested on, how can I provide those opportunities that I talked about where, you know, instead of going through all these things to get that phlebotomy license, and you can, in unit four, you can get your phlebotomy license, but how can I share my story? How can that be a part of, of what that is? How can we get the trades more involved? And not just union labor, but trades in general, to go do a lot of these different things. And so, that was what, what I was interested in doing and what my thought was, that I, that's what I would, yes, that, that was, the trades bringing that, you know, construction point to it. And as we, as the weeks moved along and everything, I knew, I knew the referendum would be an issue, like, we would be discussing the referendum and I thought I'd have a construction background to, to add to the table, to add to the conversation. And I have, it's helped me immensely, especially as we've gone out these past three months of sharing it and talking about these things. But, that was my idea, that I would, I would contribute that. And I think I, I just have this, I've always had this sense to, to give back and this was something that I felt that I could give and contribute and it would be my contribution, if you will, to, to the community. And so, I, I think that's important. When I ran and really until election day, which was, I think it was April 14th, had no idea that I would be president. I don't know if that's, I, it was what it had to be, but then with the results, how the results came in, with no incumbents winning, winning the election, and I was, I became very close with, with Karis, became very close with Jamar. We, we had nine forums over that period of time where we were together, had lots of conversations. Karis introduced me to, to people and individuals and so, but I always in my mind, I really did, I thought it was going to be, Karis and Jamar were going to be back on the board, that one of them would probably be president, the other one would probably be vice president and two others would kind of nestle in there with them. Actually, three of us, because Jonathan ran unopposed. And that was just, that's not what the voters had in mind. And so, the referendum got defeated really bad, about a 70 to 30 defeat. Four or five new board members were coming on the board and it really came about then that we would be electing someone new to, to the, to the presidency. And I did know before, before the meeting, but that it was going to be, it was going to be me, just in our conversations and everything. But, yeah, we got sworn on on May 4th, 2015 and seems, seems so long ago. Not even, nowhere close to two years ago. About a year and a half ago, May 4th. Three minutes later, just the process, we had elections as the seven of us vote in the various positions and I was president and Lori got up, I got up, we switched seats and it was, it was a, Lori Bonnet, I replaced Lori Bonnet. And I will tell you, Lori Bonnet staying on the board, she, she, she moved to Pittsburgh in January of this year, but having Lori there was the best thing possible for me. It really was. And the best thing for the board, to be honest with you. Because Lori had, this is incredible, difficult, the referendum, it's, it's a very, and right, wrong, or whether you had enjoyed her tactics, Lori had been an effective, we would not be here without, without that referendum being put forward. And so, having Lori there, being aware that Lori would check me if I was doing procedurally something wrong or not, but she also gave a tremendous amount of advice on how to do things and how to conduct the, to, to conduct myself as president. And so, but I did a lot of reading on board procedure, a lot of watching those first initial meetings and making sure, you know, going back and thinking about how I could do things differently. But, then just really growing into the position and trying to bring it, bring it forward and own, own that position, so. Does that answer your question, George, or no?
That, that's a wonderful story, just what I was hoping, what I was hoping you would provide. And, and as you look back on what is it now, almost 20, 20 months, I guess, on the board, you had no idea how much time and energy probably it would take or did you?
No, so what I tell people is the, what has happened, and nothing's really shocked me, of like, you know, there's some crazy things that come across and there's some sad things and there's some surprising things. So, none of that has surprised me. What has surprised me is the quantity and the amount. And so, and I think a little bit of that is, is just being in the position of the presidency. But, I will say, something else that I do is, and I have tremendous support from the rest of the board. I told you earlier, I don't spell worth a lick. I think it has a lot to do with the, the early upbringing that I have. A part of it though, is just how I'm wired. It's never going to get better. It actually had, I shouldn't say that. Being in this position, being forced to answer emails and write emails and I've gotten, I've grown in that. I've certainly, and area, I have a long way to go. But, I send most of the things that I'm going to send out, whether it be a Facebook post or I send it either to my wife or I send it to Kathy Richards, who's taken on board blogging and she's tremendous in that aspect of it. And, you know, Amy Armstrong, we talk daily about the district and things going on and conversations that need to be had, so have a tremendous board. Dr. Baker has recently joined us and so, really excited about that. It's her, her, her experiences particularly around education policy and really, that's, the interesting thing is, we've been so engrossed with the, with the referendum, not that, that we haven't done or discussed anything else, but that at some point, we need to stop talking, need to stop focusing as much and deeply as we are on the referendum and move into some of those. That's almost what I'm most hopeful about, is that.
A chance to get into real education.
Yeah, and we certainly are in that. We're certainly, we're also in an interesting point too, with, with the superintendent search going on. And so, not that we're on hold or anything, because we're always forward, if you will, but, you know, thinking about that and getting that person in place. And so, really wanting to, really, really happy with some of the things that we're working on and where those things are going, but wanting to grow them, but needing the leadership that we, we bring in to be, wanting to grow them and expand on what we're doing and doing things differently. And so, computational thinking at Kenwood, you know, can we, can we bridge that into our other math classes across, across the elementary district and those sorts of things? We have great programs at Parkland around our career technology. We need facilities at Centennial, so we can stop busing them. Growing our AP Computer Science, but then can, can we start, you and I've had this discussion, can we, can we, through legislation, move it so we're get, those are, those are recognized credits and those, those types of things? And so, we're working on those things, but could it be more, more of a focus or more energy? And I don't, I hate even saying that, because we are working on those things, but I think that's what makes this so intense right now, is that we, on top of everything else we're doing, we have this very busy referendum that we're working on as well.
One of the things we need to think about, I guess, how you work with the allocation of resources. I mean, we're math, science teachers, okay? That's where we're at, and obviously, we're going to focus on that and everything. There's since been a debate and a discussion, I hear the argument, the academics versus the athletics. What proportion do we have? Can we really focus on spending this amount of money on athletics? We have so many problems in the academics. I mean, we've had students, both of us have students that have excelled, that came out of Central and we've all seen that, and there's others that are struggling. And then you got the whole forgotten half of everything. Where vocational education went away to the dodo herd.
Absolutely.
And it's all gone. And now, if you, if Evan Han got you into the apprentice program, going through school with the plumbers, I mean, that's not available. And then the problem you run into, and we saw that today with the such severe deficit in math and science and lighting, the student's ability to retire, to go into the military is hampered. The student's ability to go on to post-secondary is hampered, even with incredible Parkland. But then the needs and requires that you learn to go into the trades.
Absolutely.
Is significantly hampered.
Yep.
How, how, I mean, how do you, I don't even have an idea. How do you see this or balancing all this and how do you see your role of trying to balance that entire nightmare and get the information out to the public?
When it comes specifically to athletics and academics, see, I, I think sometimes we, we think of, certainly in these facilities, we have dollars allocated for our athletic facilities and stuff, but when I think about that, I think of, like, the track, we're, we're adding a second track at Southside. And so, 10-track teams share one track currently in our district. And so, the ability to split 10-track teams up between two tracks as opposed to all sharing one tracks, what benefit does that have on the academic side of things? And then I think about all these programs where the wrestling team doesn't have wrestling mats that are suitable to wrestle on. So, I don't think we're, we're pouring a ton into, to athletics that we could be siphoning off and putting towards academics. However, the things that you talk about are, so expanding the facilities, address particularly around career technology, expanding those spaces, bringing those types of classrooms back. We, we have waiting lists where students aren't able to take those classes, because there flat out isn't space to do it. And I would argue, so my interesting, I am in a position right now where I could very easily go back to college. As, as a 34-year-old, I could go back to college. I work here at the university, I, I can have it paid for, for the most part. And so, when, when we talk about being career, career or college-ready, really expanding that finish line, I think right now, the finish line is very narrow. And right now, that finish line is very much college, I feel. And so, expanding that finish line where that is, is also being career-ready. And so, bringing in some of those VOTEC. But, at the same time, I don't want to, Dr. Baker and I talk about this quite a bit, is I don't want to create a scenario where we're, we're tracking that you get into this lane and this is your finish line. But, I, and I, I talk about this all the time, so you have geometry and so, you have, you have two students, you have two very student, very different students. And here's the difference, ones, the difference is their socioeconomic. And so, you have, you have a student here who, who's flush and the parents will send and pay for, pay for college. And then you have a student that has really no clear path of going to college, maybe if they get these rocking good grades, but they're not, they're past that, but they're a good student. And so, you're sitting, you're sitting in freshman, sophomore geometry class and, and you're learning about these things that, what is this going to do for this lower socioeconomic person that isn't going to have any interest in doing that or applying it, or doesn't see how that? So, then, can we create a geometry class that is trades geometry? And so, you're measuring pipe, you're talking about the practical application of what this bending conduit, running around a corner, cutting a corner, and start introducing those types of things, where both students can be in that class and both are accomplishing, you're learning geometry, but now you've engaged that student. I think the big thing that we need to work on is how are we engaging our students? And, because I think that's where, where the college finish line has been, has taken over us, where the VOTEC's been totally pushed out. And so, what can we start doing, not only at the high school, but the middle school and even the elementary school level, where we're engaging students all the way through and talking about and presenting these opportunities that are out there that, that exist? So, I've got to go back and, back and tell a story. I always tell it. And I told the gentleman that, that I tell it. So, when I got my phlebotomy license, I was, I worked three nights a week at, at Provena.
Can you say what phlebotomy is?
Phlebotomy, I draw blood, I drew blood.
Blood sucker.
Blood sucker, sorry, as a phlebotomist.
Not the political con.
No.
Those are the good ones.
So, I, I, I worked three nights, a girl named Erica worked the other three nights, and then a gentleman by the name of Jonathan Hudson worked Sunday nights. Jonathan Hudson was around my age, African-American male, and he was working as a phlebotomist, putting himself through, through nursing school.
You were at Carl?
I was at Provena at this time. So, so was putting himself through nursing school. Flash, so this is, he had, neither of us had phlebotomy licenses, but we were both performing as phlebotomists. In unit four, you can get a phlebotomy license, you can get a nursing assistance, you can get your EMT license. These are now available and we have a handful of students taking these classes. Fast forward, fast forward, fast forward 15 years later, I'm a plumber at the University of Illinois, making relatively good ways, you can look it up on Daily Atlanta, I make $80,000 a year, working, working as a plumber here at the University of Illinois. I don't have a college degree, I have a great job. Jonathan, who, he and I were making the same amount of money, $10 an hour, working as phlebotomist. He put himself through nursing school, he worked in the intensive care unit at Provena for a number of years, and then put himself through nursing anethesis school at Milliken, went back to school and got his nursing anethesis. So, flash forward to that 15 years, Jonathan now makes $180,000, $190,000 a year, working at Carl, as a nursing anethesis.
You know, I think the key thing, and I know, my kids went to ran through high school. Coming out where we came from, Minnesota teachers, I ensured that they had the vocal, solid vocational track and the solid academic track.
Yep.
And it was very, very successful and then are both very successful engineers. Because we learned that all ahead, but we learned that at the academy, every child can excel and succeed and just a matter of the teacher helping the student and the student making the effort and it all come together.
Making that connection, gaining that interest, allowing, and then also providing a, I, I think in today's, when we talk about the things you can see on the internet and see on the tube, everything's right there. Google, 10 years old, everything's right there, that. Google, ten years old, everything's right there that you've, you've gotta find something and they've gotta believe, there's gotta be.
But you have to remember, the stuff is not there on the computer and nothing about me more than anything, and I had the conversation on the way here today with the professor that we're with the student walking over here. Is everybody's gone so much to rely on the technology, the vocational skills have taken a second stand. Without understanding the solid foundation in the math and the science and the English is absolutely essential whether you're gonna go vocational track to be a plumber or carpenter or electrician or a mechanic, or are you gonna come into academia?
No, that, I, I agree a hundred percent. What I was getting at is the, the despair and the, the, everything, everything's accessible. Everything, all the violence, all the, all the hardship of the adult world is so easily accessible and so easily shared. That, that if we're not doing those things that you just discussed, if we're not training them and creating these students and building these students, they don't have a hope, they don't have a sense or a belief that they can, there's something better for them afterwards. And so, we have to, we have to be doing educate. Another thing that I, and I'm, um, jumping around here a little bit, is discipline. Why do we send anyone under the age of third grade home for suspension? Like, what, what have we accomplished there?
Nothing.
Absolutely nothing, yet we do it. And we do it in this district. We do it every single day in this district. We're sending home kindergartners, first graders and second graders.
What I have as teachers is we're in with the family life, with the discipline, the standards that all of us raised our kids with and what we were raised with is completely different.
Absolutely.
And when you've got thirty to forty percent of the individuals in your student body from the homes they come from, there is no discipline at home.
Absolutely.
Students that didn't wanna go home, but this behavior stayed into our class, stayed with us at the school.
I don't, I don't think it's, um, uh, the case necessarily, or that, that, I don't know that, that studies have been done to say, that are carefully enough done to say that this is now a, a problem and difference in scale as opposed to different in recognition from what it's been. But it may be different in response.
Well, and, and I think, how do you, um, so we can't, we can't just say, Johnny, you stay, you stay in class because we're not going to send you home. But what are those services and those additional things? What are, so, third grade, and so, and you, you see, read literature and I'm not as versed on it as others are. But, if we, if we focused on some of those things earlier, some of those social interactions and, or, and we're doing it. Because I think part of it is working with a student to move them to a spot, but also moving the teachers to a spot. And so, kind of finding that middle ground, that balance, if you will, of, of where, where is the harmony? Where we're doing things just differently enough, but then we're really then able to start that reading, that math, that, that, so we, if, if we let those discipline issues stay and remain and we don't do anything to address those, the, the social behavior or how, how do you, how are you ever going to teach and be able to build upon those, those foundations? I mean, we have students, suspensions every, every other week and they're, they're not getting what they need.
And, um, you, you have access to the data, I'm sure, about how those suspensions break down. Which schools, and you know, um, how they might be identifiable by location or socioeconomic status, status that were predominating one of those elementary schools. You also probably know the teachers and the principals who are working on it. How do you, and, and board members who are adopting schools.
Uh, that was your question. I was trying to remember what your question was.
Yeah, so, so how is it? Are board members, can board members be proactive in it? And also, you know, what, what's the direction for, you're the question. Quite, you have a problem, third graders being, and then you're being sent home, it's not productive. What's, as a board member, what's the solution?
The problem is that third graders are disrupting the learning in the classroom. But there seems to be, there is already some other alternative other than sending them home.
And there is. We, we have, so Senate Bill one hundred was, was, was the whole zero talents and everything. And that's something that I'm very proud of as a district. We're, we're fielding phone calls every single day. How are you doing this in unit four? We've changed nothing. We have not had to alter a single thing that we're doing because we're that far ahead of how we do discipline. With our actions program and, and sending them there, and now we're growing actions into the school itself. And so, we're, we're starting to look at that. Some of it is, I think, thinking about policy and doing it, doing it correctly, because I know of other school districts around the country that have instituted a policy where we're not. But I can't, we can't just make the policy that says we're not suspending. There has to be things in place that we are doing it, so those services and things have to be in place. And so, and then, kind of what George alluded to, figuring out, kind of following the data and being a little strategic about it. But I can tell you, we have these issues at all twelve of our elementary schools where it's, there's a little bit of that is because of school choice. And, you know, our population is, um, uniquely diverse, if you, with the choice, that's part of, part of what choice does. But, um, there's certainly pockets and cells of it. And I think, I think there's, I don't think anyone is exempt from, not, I don't wanna say blame, but there has to be responsible. So if it's not family, can the community? And so, we're working with the churches, um, on, you know, Sunday school, can you be doing some of these? Talking about some of these things, can you, can you, can we be opening our schools up longer into the evenings to be, to be centers for tutoring and stuff like that? And so, um, the teachers, trying to move teachers forward, right now we're, um, doctor, is it Dr. Olive? PBF, personal behavior, looking at how, how we look at ourselves. You know, what is, what is, what, you know, and we're an iceberg, you, each of us is an iceberg and we have what we present out for. But then what, what is our character, what are our thoughts, what are our beliefs below the waterline? And how are those impacting how we teach and how, how we treat our students and everything? And so, and then, um, moving the students, so.
See, the whole thing comes down, I think, with the referendum or anything, come back from money, is what are the achievements and so what for this program? How does it make better? How is it gonna prepare the student better? What are they gonna end up doing that they don't have now? So if, if that, that answer can be solid given to the, to taxpayers' hand, this is what the direct benefit is and this is what the outcome's going to be. Then the probability, you know, somebody else other than all of us that are bandwagon cheers.
Yep.
Are gonna be out there saying, okay, yeah, let's go along with the pay. But as I see right now, looking from the outside, from all the different perspectives, I've taught at Central, I've been there and done all this stuff. It's a no-win situation right now because the perception they were announced, here we're gonna get hammered with an additional tax. We don't see any direct benefit where we're seeing a whole quality improvement outside of that finite group that's always gonna excel no matter what. And so, the question then comes into, okay, we're gonna do that and spend, but we wanna focus this much money on athletics versus the real problems or where we don't have solid vocational education and academics combined for every student.
So.
It's, I mean, it's, I mean, I think you're a wonderful person, you did a wonderful job to do what you're doing, but I, it seems to me like a nightmare.
Oh, it, it's certainly a challenge. I'm on video now, don't, don't corner me into anything. Uh, no, it's certainly a challenge. Um, again, I go back to, so here, here's, going to the referendum. The referendum is, is four things, is driven by four things. Number one is capacity. We, we are at a hundred, we're busting at the seams. We have ten trailers in this district. So, we flat out don't have space for, for our students. So capacity is number one, in some people's eyes. You know what I mean? Truly.
Well, I mean, that's, that is number one because you have to educate all children and if you don't have a desk for them.
Well, you'll, you'll see, you'll see what I mean when I go to that. So.
I think that hasn't been brought out that I've seen totally, I think it has.
My heart sinks, but it goes, it goes to that, and so, I agree and I hear you, when, when you tell me you, you have it. That capacity is the first thing I say every single time. The reason we're building these facilities is we're at a hundred and four percent. We've had record, every single freshman kindergarten class for the past six years in unit four has been bigger than the previous one. We are, we're at over ten thousand students now in the district. We're, there was a bubble and I still, I almost think it's wrong data, it's such a weird bubble. We had twelve thousand students in the district for like two years in the seventies, but then it disappears. And it's like, what, what happened to two thousand students? And so, I'm like, did a two get added where the zero should be? Anyway, so capacity number one. And then, um, curriculum programming, exactly what you said. VOTEC students have no space, there's no space exists at Centennial for VOTEC education.
Teachers left either.
I, I understand that. There's some good ones though in our district, working in our district.
Incredible teachers.
Absolutely. Well, just so you know, I admit that across the board, but we have good VOTEC's teacher, excellent VOTEC's teachers. So, adding, um, career technology space at Centennial for those students so they're not bussed every single day into Central. And expanding on what we have, we have forty students working in eight welding booths in a welding class. I'm telling you, as someone who's been in a welding booth, we have, you need a, yeah, it's, it's very difficult to, to get and grasp and understand. However, at the same time, alluding to the great, wonderful teachers we have, our female Val Victorian was one of those welding students and took second at state, at the state welding, uh, for high schoolers. So, we do it very well. We need to be giving everybody else, we need, and then we have a hundred people on the waiting list for that each year. And so, my idea is, so grow, grow those, those areas. Our science classrooms are set up just like you would imagine a class, well, just as they were when you were there. Yes, and so, so bringing those forwards, creating it so you can do class and then go into a lab and move in and out of that situation to do it differently, to do it how we should be doing it. And so, that's number two. And this was where I go into, is, is capacity the number one thing? Accessibility. We have two elementary schools that are unaccessible to students, unacceptable, inaccessible to faculty, to parents, to grandparents, to community members. And today in unit four, where we are with the university, where the university is a leader in disability, we just don't feel like that's right and appropriate. And so, making those schools accessible, Dr. Howard, um, will come down and so obviously that new building. And then, safety. Centennial High School is not a very accessible building. Amy Armstrong, um, has to take her daughter to the back door, ring a bell, walk clear down to the other end of the building, take an elevator up, walk clear down to the other end of the building, cut across a hallway and back to the offices.
When I was teaching at Centennial, after I got trashed, I couldn't get up the steps, I had to go around and get in.
Yep, absolutely. So creating a safe, secure entrance, bringing the administration down. Right now, you can buzz into the front door, walk up the stairs, take out the, the hall monitor and you have free reign of that school. And never have to go through an administration office, never have to go through a secure entrance. It's one buzz in, I'm here to come to the office and you go, you can disappear into that school. Bringing those offices downstairs, putting an elevator in that space, making it a, a safe, secure, accessible entrance. So, did I cover all four, the four things? Yep. So, and depending on who you are, what you are, those, those are all things. And not once did I mention athletics in there. I know, and it's hard, and it's hard. But then, but when, when, when we talk about athletics, when I think about, the, the track is a big one and then the field space across at Centennial, where, at the old YMCA. The fact that marching band now can walk across the street instead of loading up buses and bussing over to Centennial and doing brand practice, they have, they'll have a turf field across the street that they can practice on.
It was so strange because when I was teaching biology, I took my kids over to West Side Park.
Yep.
And that's where we held field classes.
Yep, and it's, and it, that's how they've been doing it for a hundred years. I mean, it literally is how they've been doing, and so I, I understand and it's, it's a, it's a small portion of it. And, and here's, here's what I tell people, and this is, this is kind of, and it goes again back to the students. And having the students involved in the superintendent search is, is finding that balance. So, what we did with the superintendent search, and I'll try, I'll tie this back into, to what I'm talking about, is, A, we, we hired, um, a consultant to come in and could, help us conduct that search, basically filter everything. And the reason for that is, I think more so because of how we, we've been so involved and so out in the community, is that we, we were accessible to a lot of people, um, but also not, we needed to separate ourselves from, from that influence of outside groups of people. I'm, I'm going to out myself a little bit here, but I'm on the Control Shift newsletter. Did you know that?
On, on our list?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
And so, so I'm on there. And so, one particular conversation, um, was talking about, getting, getting together, I think you were gonna do a group of thirty, you were gonna meet with the board, the board members, try to meet with all the board members.
I was talking about influencing the superintendent.
Superintendent search.
Yeah, I remember that.
And so, um, and then I will tell you, and I, I'm sure you will believe me when I tell you this. I was having administrators that I knew and trusted and, and really talking to me about who and who I shouldn't be thinking about as internal candidates.
Oh, yeah.
And then I have business members and business leaders and former board members that have influence and play and swing in, in the community. That's one of the most interesting things. They're saying who and how I should hire as a superintendent. And I have, the kids should allow me to, so, so when I, so what we did was we had the survey. And it is, it's a corny little survey that had sixteen questions on it, pick the five that, and if you look at them, I'd love all sixteen to be ultimately in the superintendent. And kind of where we're at is that, at this stage in the process, it, it's going to be, you're going to get a lot of different qualified applicants. And so, allowing everybody's voice to be as possible heard as equally. And then we, we had the, um, we had, we brought in ISB, it's the, it was the most expensive part of bringing in the survey. We brought in two people for two days to conduct community engagement, one-on-one.
How did that go?
We had, uh, under forty staff members participate and we carved out time for them. And I think we had under thirty community members participate. So, not very well. Great conversation with, with, with the people that came and spoke. But we weren't a part of that, we weren't involved in that. And so, ISB will take that and puts it all together for us and we'll read it, and I have read through the comments. And it's, it's very, it's very, um, common themes throughout and everything. And so, it, it just allowed us to, to do that. And so, the same thing with, with the, with the, if I didn't have the new field space on this referendum, I would lose half the people. I would, just as, because I'm not at the Interstate Drive, I've lost a huge portion of the people. It's finding that balance of, of mixing in the needs at the academic level, the needs at our athletics level. That having two tracks and being able to get kids home two, three, four hours earlier is going to be a benefit to their academics. It really is. Having, um, having the field across this way to, to do it, creating, and they're still not equal. I hear it all the time. Centennial still gets to walk out the back door. It's a big deal for a lot of people. It's also a big deal not for a lot of people. And so, it, it's, it's finding that compromise, finding and building that, that plan. And again, I fall into that category that no matter what we roll out or, I still don't think it's the best plan, to be honest with you. I think there's, but there's, my favorite plan, I'm saying this on camera, um, was a, uh, one campus, two high school model at Centennial. Yeah, see, it's a good idea and a lot of, we agree on why there's a lot of good in that. You, you'd have to, there'd have to be some joint partnership with the park district or you'd have to have your athletics offsite somewhere else, which you, you could do. But there, there's the benefit and gain in that. I still think that's a fantastic idea when you're talking about, then, then you could have a VOTEC. have a Votec building where just full of welding booths, full of drafting rooms, full of AutoCAD rooms, full of all of that. It's a great idea, it's a great plan.
See, I think, I think one of the things too is the perception, because the U of I is so great here and Parkland is so great.
Uniforms great too.
How can we get the achievement within the local schools up to the level of the expectations for a community with two great schools? Because you've got the whole proportion of selling extraordinary gonna do good and then you've got sixty percent.
I, I think honestly, it, it's, it's continuing to grow the partnerships, expanding on what we have in these bubbles and pockets. I will tell you this and we'll see, you know, people come and go. It is, it is hard, it is hard to, you know, I'm, I've got two and a half plus years left and my, I've already started thinking about, is this something that I can do for another term after this? It is hard, so more people have to be involved, more people have to care and it has to be, there has to be more support.
I thought when you were talking about mobility, you were talking student population mobility, which used to be twenty-five percent. Is it still there?
What do you?
Students coming in and out of the district?
I think it's a, I don't even think it's that high to be honest with you.
It was, it used to be incredibly high of coming and going and coming and going.
I don't think, we, I mean, we're pretty stable on.
Well, numbers, yes, but actual physical students.
You mean the mobility of the students?
Mobility of the students.
I thought we had students coming in, not all the time.
What, what percent of students that enter at Central actually end up there four years later? What, not by dropping out, but because they moved.
No, I understand. I, I think it's, I would say, I haven't heard that number being that thing. And so to be honest with you though, I, and that's why I'm guessing it's not that high because I think I would hear more about a number like that. But you do certainly hear of the mobility in the community and everything, but we do remain pretty stable.
Well, in, in terms of overall numbers, yeah.
Yes. But I think part of it is, it is, I find it rewarding and that might be unique. But I'm also at the same time exhausted.
Yes.
I'm so tired and our board's so tired and our administration's so tired. And so I think part of it is because the referendum and what it's consumed and the energy it's consumed. But some of these things are just, and you see, you, you know, you have members that were at Kenwood that are now moving on, that it's gonna be difficult to, to replace and find it. And if, if you lose a couple more, I sit here and wonder, to be honest with you, how can we sustain it? How do we, how do we continue rolling that? So I talked ever so briefly with the new chancellor the other day. One of the neat things is I do get to meet a lot of people and I, I was in a situation where Amy Armstrong and I were with him at a, at an event and we talked for about five minutes. And he is really interested in this kind of career, from cradle to career type concept. And I think that's some of, I think that starts addressing some of the things. If this country would really look at itself and do a year of maternity leave for the mothers and, you know, do a solid for, for the fathers in those, in those relationships and then really look at taking care of the child after that year until they get to, you would solve a lot of the problems and issues. And this kind of goes to, this is getting outside of, this is more free speak. I'm not, I'm, I'm thinking of some of the conversations that I've listened to here. When we're talking about educating voters and stuff, I think there's portions of our society that is really scared, wants to continue to suppress the vote. I think we're very fortunate when we look at, especially here in Champaign County and, and some of the work that Gordy has done. And so, but it's interesting that I, whereas I think Gordy's doing a fantastic job, I still hear people frustrated that he, he should be doing more. And so finding that, that line and that balance and it's always going to, there, there's percentages of our population that don't want our kids to be, you know, you and I think,
indoctrinated.
Yes, exactly, yes. Yes, we're gonna create, we're gonna create all these, or, you know, why isn't voter registration automatic when you, when you get your license or when you do anything, when, whenever you do that, why isn't it just an automatic thing?
Yeah, but you still run the problem, even when you have the voter registration, the participation.
Well, that's what.
And all this comes into play. And then the other question, which I guess, how you can deal with it, is the teacher, the expectation, expectation of what the teacher and the school are responsible to do today has changed extraordinarily from the time that we went to grade school, we went to college and got up and started teaching over thirty, way over thirty years ago.
Also, what you're allowed to do is a lot different.
That's part of it. It comes to the other question, do you as a board work with teachers as well or just with the registration?
It is, it is, I would say, and so this is interesting because you edit the, I get to see the video before.
Yes, yes, we will send you the video.
No, and I, I don't say that because.
You could, I'll just. Yeah, that's right.
Yes, is it as good as, you, you asked about the school, the adopted schools. So I have a full-time job. I work forty hours a week as a plumber. I don't work forty hours at the U of I. Today, right now, sitting here talking to you alone, I'm taking an hour of vacation time to, to be here. No, it's, it's fine, it's important, but, but, no, I have to, that's, that's, that's how, that's how it is. And so I take, I take, I'm, I'm permitted to take time to, I have forty, working at the university, I do have forty hours over.
You should have given you the free time off, you're with pay to come help us out.
I, I have some elective official time that I'm able to top, tap into. I try to save it for, I have a conference in November I'm going to, I try to save it for those bigger months of time. And I'm also now allowed to approve, take it without pay. And I, I, so I mix, I mix my vacation time without pay and my elective official time. And so right now, my, my adopted schools are Kenwood, Booker T. Washington, and I have Franklin, Franklin is my middle school and I wanna say Central is my high school, but I.
It's a much more one.
No, well, there's only seven board members and we have nineteen schools and so we've got it spread out. I will say Kathy, Kathy, Amy, Dr. Baker, Lynn, even Jonathan do a fantastic job of getting out to, to the schools, filling in, going to events. I go to events, I went to the academic awards night at Central, I went to it at Centennial the other night. I go to the three K at Booker T. Washington, I've gone to, went to the opening ceremony. I have not gotten out to the schools as much as I would have liked to as that. However, I do have some good relationships with teachers, several of our board members have relationships with teachers. We meet once a month with the upper management of it. I am kind of in that unique situation where I'm actually a delegate to the AFL-CIO and IFT and CFT have delegates to that, so I have some relationship with there. I do know that we had a, it went to, we had negotiations that went all the way to, clear to a strike vote. However, I think if you talk to both sides, at least my opinion on it, it was still a very clean, respectful process and that we, you saw it wrap up relatively quickly. And so the relationships there, it certainly needs to grow and expand. And so, and we do that. I have a, a good talk, I can call Jen White up right now if I wanted to. I have some other teachers that I can do that with. And so, but it's a lot. When, when you think, I, that's what I sometimes say, and we, you and I were talking about this when we ran into each other, is that I have a full-time job and I also have a full-time volunteer position with being on the school board.
And a four-month-old at home.
And a four-month-old at home. I, and that's, I mean.
One closer second.
We treat this and we talk to the girls about this, that this is, this is, you know, dad is board president, but it's, it's really a family, my in-laws and my parents, you know, it's a, it's a, that's what I tell people to think about.
But you know, you're giving a gift to your family, you're giving a gift to the community, you're giving a gift to your kids right now.
Oh, absolutely.
It can't be measured.
Yeah, no, and that's what I hope and that's what I tell my parents, like that's what I, I tell my dad, dad, I do this because I remember watching you go to PTA meetings and know that you were uncomfortable in that situation and you, there was a nature trail that got built behind the school and you did that and we go back fifteen years later and it's still there. And so those, those are the things, it doesn't make it easier though, but I kind of got off.
What, what's, what's next? Cause I, I got this horrible feeling based on the economics and just all the stuff set aside what we talked about. The referendum's gonna fail.
You think it's gonna fail?
Absolutely.
Oh, I hate, I'm not sure.
But yes, so what's next?
Yeah, I mean, and I'm not expecting an answer because, I mean, we all know what we would like, we all know, understand the need for education and how we improve the quality of education.
Yep.
But it not necessarily means that we have to go to the super fancy technology because that hasn't really improved everything.
Yeah.
It's made quality better sometimes, but it hasn't really improved it.
Absolutely. And that's the thing, I sit here and tell people that this isn't glitz and glam and, I mean, we need improved networks in our schools, you know, when Central needs an improved network system there to, to do, to have the computers and have those online and up and running. But this isn't about glitz and glam and so we'll, we'll have to go back to the drawing board, we'll have more trailers. I mean, we have ten trailers, we'll have more trailers even if this passes next year just because that's how long we're out from breaking shovels to the ground. And so as a board, we're gonna have to go back to, why do you, just out of curiosity, why, why do you think it will fail? What do you think it, the cost?
I, I think the overall cost is just how the economics, you're hitting everybody, what our costs of living are, what our expenses for food, for gas, for everything else, our medical expenses, cause every time you turn around, it's going up and yet we're on a total fixed income.
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, we're, our income is not going, we're retired and that's fixed now. So the amount we have available is not an increase.
No, and so, and so, absolutely, and so, but I, I agree with you. If, if this fails, I, I think we've done through the process that we entered into and it was taking, it was building on the previous board's work and the, the conversations and the, the anger, if you will, that came out of it. Is that, is that, so I think we've answered that. I think we have a plan that people, it's not glitz and glam, yes, there are some facilities and every, in it and all, but I think we have a plan that people aren't like, I just flat out don't like that location. You do, you certainly have some people that don't like the location, we'll both know on that. But for the most part, the community support is there for the plan. I think it's a cost and so I think that'll be what we go back to the drawing table with is cutting some of these projects out and looking at, you know, getting that cost lower. And so that's a, unfortunately, that, what else are we left, left with but to do to continue the conversation? And to be honest with you, I don't know if it's something that we turn around and do again in the spring. You know, because then you start thinking about how that election will set up with, you know?
You mean you would put the referendum on in the spring?
Or not.
If this one doesn't pass, then you've got to give yourself a break.
But the, the problem is, and it was true the last time, I believe, the crisis, can I remember Susan Zola coming to, to the Borgini after the, the plan failed last time. She said, kids are here now.
Yes.
You know, we've got portables, we've got, the kindergarten class is way bigger than we have capacity for. So the kids are there, the space is not, the crisis grows.
Yeah.
If we have another layoff here and we're hearing all over day and day, we're the economics or anything, more additional layoffs are all possible.
Absolutely.
So individuals are sitting there looking, what is my fixed budget? What is my, what are my expectations? If this goes up three hundred dollars a year that I have to pay on my property taxes, what is it worth doing? So when you look at the whole, like they got a child in there, they understand education, they're a teacher, they're gonna do a gay rock team on a horse.
Yep.
But the other one's saying, three hundred bucks? I ain't got three hundred bucks.
Absolutely. And, and I'm fine, to be honest with you, the person that can't afford it, doesn't want to, like, the, the no tax person, I'm fine, if you are educated on what it is and what's at stake, I, I'm fine with a no vote, I really am. I mean, I know that sounds hard. If, if, if you're an educator and if you're, but if you're, some of it when it's, this board hasn't listened, this board hasn't, you know, it's, and there's nothing, and I won't ever say that, you know what I mean? We, we have listened and we're never gonna be able to listen to, I sit in meeting after meeting that's open and public, we met, and we have a lot of participation, but it's, I don't know, and that's what we talk about, what more could we do? I had a realtor last night telling me that you haven't gotten this out very well and I'm like, I, Tuesday night, I was at three referendum things. I, I was gone, I got off work, literally changed at work, ran around to three different referendum things and made it to award ceremony at Centennial. Last night, I went to, to hour and a half plus referendum conversation, went up Central and then dashed back over to Centennial and stopped by my union hall and talked to members about the referendum after my meeting at the Savoy. I don't know what more I can do. I don't know, to be honest with you, what more my wife will allow me to do.
I think, what I've seen, what I've heard is extraordinary what you achieved and where you've been and why you're doing it and God bless you.
No, and I appreciate that. And everybody's doing that, all the board's doing that. And we have superintendent and assistant superintendent, we're at this meeting, you know, we, we are, we are putting the work in, but we have residents that have no idea. They have a ballot sitting at their home. I'm not calling them.
You know what, I'm waiting for the day after it when we could talk about other things. So many things that are. Yes, will you come back?
Yeah, I can come back sometime, let me build some time.
I would, yeah. But I, I wanted to ask Rebecca.
Yes.
Have you as a voter, as a citizen, got the answers about the referendum that makes you knowledgeable?
And you too probably. No, I don't know.
You're.
No, knew nothing about it walking in here. Oh, what, at this meeting?
After this meeting.
Yeah, so this was useful, but I would, I wouldn't.
So not one house?
One vote, done, I'll do it. Start the clock.
That's a vote, it's not a yes vote. That's right.
I wanted to go back before this all breaks up and just tell you that there's a fabulous program in Evanston where the geometry class built a house for Habitat for Humanity and George probably knows all about.
Mary Joy Carney, she was talking with you yesterday, it's wonderful.
If that is something that unit four would ever want to bring in, I mean, I'm all in on that, you know, if you need somebody to.
We did that, we did that, right, she ran into with Dale, cause my kids were in a totally class involved in it.
To be honest with you, some of these smaller rural communities are kicking our butt on, on our Votec and what, what those students are capable of. And I can tell you as, as a union member, that's, that's who's getting those jobs. And they're great guys and great people and gals.
The academy, Jimmy was built for Rose Cottage and then we took it down and we put it back up the next year.
I think we'll see some exciting things over the next couple of years that, and to be honest with you, when we get to go back to that, that's what will, that's what will keep me in the district and potentially volunteering, is the potential to, I can't speak enough of Mark Shagnon and some of the work he's doing and some of those programs that, we're doing some of those things and can we just grow and expand upon them? He talks about a, a facility in South Dakota, which is just, it sounds fascinating, but they, they build a house at the school and it's like a parade, the town lines up and they parade it to, to a location and things like that.
That's what they do in Evanston.
Yep.
And Evanston gives the property.
Yep, and so, yeah, creating some of those partnerships, have some great relationships formed with the Park District, the city, really growing on some of those things. Can we, this is something maybe to start thinking about you math and science people. So we have these devices, we have one-to-one devices and the ability for students to take them home, but if there's no Wi-Fi access for them at home, there's no, there's no reason for them to have it.
I gotta keep going back to the same thing, but the practical slide point. And that you can turn and use that wrench and use the screwdriver and all this other stuff and that you can take the measurement.
Yep.
There's a problem we see day and day all over this community, is individuals working at Walmart, they can't even make change.
You wanna know what I think, you, you math people in the room?
Yeah.
Fractions. No, I'm serious. If you can learn your fractions.
Read it, they don't know it now.
I know, but that goes, if you know your fractions, you can do change, you can do.
Yes.
Without fractions, you can't do anything.
The machine could do the change.
But that's the thing.
The vast majority.
If you can read and do fractions, I can make you a plumber. If you can read and do fractions, I can make you a plumber. I'm dead serious. I'm serious, if, if you have. If you have this. And you know fractions and you know how to read, I can make you a great plumber.
Yes.
I can tell, I can show you what happened firsthand, when the batteries and sun don't shine, what do you do next and when that collapse.
Well, you don't work that.
I absolutely, I absolutely, yeah. We're gonna have a lot bigger problems than that, but, but I also, what, what I mean by that is that, yes, we need to have a population where you need to do that. But at the end of the day, for, for as though, if you can have the fractions, if you can read a tape measure. And if, if you can read a tape measure, then you can read a measuring cut.
My son hires a coni, he's had brand new engineers coming to U of I and because it can't be remap on the board without the calculator. He couldn't keep an employee because they couldn't do the job as necessary to produce the product.
I, I understand that, so the kid who has gone through, and I agree a whole hundred percent. But the kid who has bounced around from home to home, from foster home to foster home, who hasn't had an address for the eighteen years that he's been in high school. That was abused as a child, that was food insecure and didn't get meals on the weekends and stuff like that. I need to be at least teaching him to read and know, know his fractions.
When he needs a fraction and what, whether he needs to add, subtract it or multiply, divide it and then it's possible.
And I know that sounds very, very basic, but.
But that's a key.
It is, you have a world opened up to you if you can have, if you can read. I have a daughter who's dyslexic and my big, I, if she gets nothing more out of, out of. Out of her public education but fractions and reading, she can go on to be, because I wanna let you know on a little secret. All I know how to do is read and fractions. And I'm being honest to you, that's all I know how to do. And I can make you the most beautiful cake, I can smoke you the most perfect meat, I can, I can lead a group, I can lead a district of. Ten thousand students and two thousand employees.
You can build a house, you can repair it.
Absolutely, and that's what I.
You can plant a field.
And if the world goes to pot and I don't have that tomorrow, I can still do all of those things. Because I have learned how to read, I know how to access things, I know how to, I know how to measure things and, and not waste material. And, and so.
One thing that changed in this real life, when I was in eighth grade, we had to take a half, half year of home economics and a half year of shop. Male or female, you had to go through both.
I think you should do that every semester.
It was the most extraordinary experience to this day because we learned how to cook and we learned how to build.
Let's, I want, I wanna, I want, I talk, and this is, this is, this is my passion is like, I, I can think of all these things of. Talking with the chamber and this will happen, like, this, these are the things that will sustain me through, through this is. Food trucks, let's buy each of the high schools a food truck. Yes, think about this, you buy a food truck. And so the first semester of this class, after taking some, some classes to lead up to this, but your, your junior, senior year, your first semester is. Thinking about what your, what your food's gonna be, what, then you're thinking about the design, what your food truck design is. And then the shop class can do that. Parkland has two paint booths, state of the art, that you could, you could do this through, through them with them. So you're doing marketing, you're having, then you have the biology class doing the hydroponic. You're growing your own fruits and vegetables, but you grow this education around a food truck, around a food truck. Think of all the things that you could bring in, all the things that you could learn, all the things that you could do. That have nothing to do, that isn't an invocative, it, it isn't, it's, it's all there and all these different things, things that you could do.
You need seven food trucks, two to sell lunch at Central, two to sell lunches at Central and one for each of the three middle schools. And then the kid, the seniors who are in business could be running the home.
They could be making, they could be making wages, you could, you could have, no, it's, I, I wanna start off with three and I want, I want one. We'll start off with one, I know that's what we'll do, because I am, I'm talking to a Chamber of Commerce, let's get a food truck and let's start a program. Her child goes to Central.
What you're modeling here is a Brevier Hall of Department of Food Science.
That's my next step, and my next step is, we, we should have a Brevier Hall. We should have a cafeteria that the students work in. That provide, we have free and reduced lunch in this community, fifty-one percent in our district. Why not create an opportunity for, if you're getting your breakfast at, at school, you're getting your lunch at school, what are you getting for dinner? Who knows?
Whatever you put in your pocket.
Yeah, whatever, whatever, whatever gets put in your bookbag potentially, so create the situation and maybe have a couple of them, but grow it at one place. But create a, create a program on a school where then students have an ability, have an ability to work that, have it all student, student run. But you and I, those of us in this room, we go and pay for that meal. But then families also come that don't have to pay for that meal, that are free or reduced rate for that meal and nobody knows, it's a, you, you can set it up to. To a model, you get a card and, and you swipe through and you, you have a community and ability to, to nourish the community, employ the community. Teach skills and trades.
We'll get control shifts looking at that.
No, I'm, so it's those ideas.
Okay, so I, I will tell you this, there is an issue with who prepares the food for the kids, they have to be licensed by the state and all that kind of stuff.
We have our, Mary, our food services and her gal teaches the classes at Parkland for the food sanitation. We have to have kitchens that prepare that, we already have the kitchen, those students, it's an eight-hour course. And guess what, and guess what, there's a job at the University of Illinois, there's jobs, jobs a gloire at the University of Illinois. That one of the things that you'll do after getting accepted to that job is get a food sanitation license. But tell you what, you already have your food sanitation license and you spent two, three years at your high school, at your schools, learning these things. And you already know how to cut and slice vegetables. You're gonna get very easily that fourteen dollar an hour job that already exists and you're gonna move up because you've been in that environment for two, three years. And then, oh, you've got a job at the University of Illinois.
You get reduced tuition.
You get reduced tuition or free tuition. It, it's, it's, it's that, those are the different pathways. So now I've created a different pathway to college that had nothing to do with that finish line, that race to, to, to get there at graduation. And you, you've teaching them a skill, you've given them, you've literally food on the table and money in the pocket to do those things. And so that's how I envision what we should be here, where we, where we are and what we do. Ag, I have eighty acres to the north here that, and we just passed legislation that'll pay after five years, half of it. The, leading up to those five years that teachers fully employed for the first two eighty and then bumped down to get to it. We should be doing these things, drones, I, I know it's part, but it's all part of it. When solar, Tesla's just making these, these solar, solar shingles. I know a guy who graduated from Centennial, went to Stanford, went to MIT, was one of my groomsmen in my wedding. And told me five years ago, I kid you not, that this was going to be the future, has a job at Tesla now. And Tesla just came out with these, with these solar shingles and so, but growing and learning these things and doing these things and. And I, I have this conversation too, if we can start teaching our students, even if they don't take some of that knowledge, that building and, and working. But if you can learn to change a faucet out, if you can learn to solder a pipe, you start. You as a community, our community start, stops relying so much on those things of some of the, you know, and that's saying where, but. But then you're also then able to start providing that service for your neighbors and your family and you start, you start bridging that gap, closing that gap on, on those things of. Truly educating them with the knowledge.
The thing about that, and I, I was supposed to have this, when you have those skills, you're not one who'd have to use the lead gate to pay for that service.
Absolutely.
Reduce it, so then the other money can be used for other better things.
Yeah, and then if you could run your own business and so if you, if you were part of that food service truck. You could, you'd have the knowledge and a baseline for how to do, how to do inventory, how to, how to market yourself and how to do that. And so those small, little different things that, that you can grow upon and, and do, so.
Well, my vote is, when the referendum passes on Tuesday, you go straight to the food truck idea.
Okay.
The rest I can't so far, that is excellent idea.
It's, it's a, well, and the thing is, we thrive in a community that, they're all over the place, they're literally all over the place. And so what I, what I envision then is all three high schools having it and so then it becomes a contest. And the contest is what is, what is your, what do you grow, you know what I mean? So maybe you're doing filet mignon on your truck, but then you've got to figure out, if you're doing that, you're gonna have to be able to charge it and do all that. But then, but then Tuesdays is Central's food truck day, Wednesdays is Centennial's food truck day. And Thursday is Urbana's food truck day and you go to the different high schools, you've got three, three different food trucks. You go to Research Park when they do it there on Friday, whatever, and you hit festivals and farmers markets on the weekends and. And you're learning something and you're making money and you're doing those things, the possibilities are, I will tell you. The problem and the issues for all these great ideas, you need a whole bunch of people behind it and supporting it and believing in it. And then either committed to stay, staying with it or committed to, to getting someone to come back in and behind it to sustain it. Because to be honest with you, if we do any of these things, we have to find a way to sustain that. And some of these things are, are the drive and the desire by people to do it. So you have to start getting people to believe in this is the right. And to be honest with you, this is a society issue, I think, here in the United States and our country is that. We look out for ourselves very well and we worry about ourselves very well, we sometimes have a really hard time. I, I can't tell you, one of the most frustrating things is that. Some of the friends and like, they appreciate it and they understand it, but. I haven't inspired them to do anything, to, to, to do much and to volunteer, you don't see any spike or uptake and I think, it's just hard. I think part of it is they see how hard and hear and read some of the things, so some of the discouragement maybe, but that it, it's hard. It's really hard to, to do it and so that's what we've got to grow, is the willingness and desire.
Everybody has commitment and not everybody has vision.
Yeah.
When you come back in spring, you take so much of your time.
No, it's okay.
I'm so grateful that you, you've been here, you've given up so much of your vacations. To come and talk with us and this is, you've, you've done what I would hope.
Yeah.
Give a picture of, of all that you have to deal with.
And this is what I.
I see it in the boardroom.
Yeah, and this is, this is what I like, I like meeting and talking to people.